Good afternoon, good to be able to start this meeting over again. Good a motion that the closed meeting be closed and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening a meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion concern the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. We have a motion?
So moved.
Motion Mr. Honeycutt to sack for Mr.?
Jones.
Edwards.
Edwards. Go call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes, at this time we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nichols, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the press and our audience tonight. As we always do, I'd like to start with our recognitions that we have several of tonight, not as many as sometimes at the end of the year, but start off the new year that's good. And we are going to have Mr. Abe Jeffers come and present the Minority Law and Research Institute winners, participants, not winners.
Good evening, Chair Sturtifin, members of the Board, Superintendent Nichols. It's my pleasure to stand here this evening in the absence of Dr. Scales, who sends his regrets he's unable to be here because this is certainly a project that he worked diligently to bring about this summer. The 19th Annual Minority Law and Research Institute was held this summer in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and Mecklenburg County Public Schools was sent four outstanding young students to be a part of this program. This was held at Southern University Law Center in Baton Rouge. We had Victoria Royster, a senior at Bluestone High School, Genesis Simmons, a junior at Parkview High School, Asia Simmons, a senior at Parkview High School, and Lizzie Temolo, a senior at Parkview High School. The program's founder and executive director was Dr. Joseph Hayden, Sr., and he started this institute to expose underrepresented students to consider careers in law, research, and generally the legal profession. Forty-four students, rising ninth graders through seniors, participated in the summer institute with students coming from 15 states together up in Baton Rouge. This is seen as an effective way to kind of introduce some students to the career and career options of school law or in law, and try to expose students to the options that may be presented to them in the future and maybe encourage them to go into law. So tonight we have two of our four that we'd like to come up and be recognized, receive a certificate, and also a packet with photographs of our students in attendance. If they come up and receive these this evening, we have Ms. Victoria Royster from Bluestone. And Ms. Genesis Simmons from Parkview High School. Got your certificate, and then there's a little packet of information in there. And usually these guys like to come and take a picture. Would you like to? Say anything?
Just thank you for the experiences, it's been fun, and Dr. Scales really worked hard, so I want to thank him.
Thank you. Can you get your name over here?
We did have a young man participate.
Thank you all once again, we're proud of you.
And with our other recognitions, I'd like to ask Ms. Height if she'd come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Sturtifin, Mr. Honeycutt, Mr. Nichols, and school board members. Tonight in the absence of Dr. Scales, I would like to recognize the Seniors of the Month. First off, I would like to recognize from Bluestone High School Larry Bullock. All right. Larry Bullock is Bluestone High School's September Senior of the Month. He is the son of Ms. April Bullock, and he resides in Buffalo Junction. He is a member of Saint John's Baptist Church in Buffalo Junction, and he is a member of the choir, and he is also training to help with security for his church. Larry is a busy student athlete. He plays football, basketball, and baseball. He is the quarterback of the football team. He maintains good grades and excels in behavior and classroom leadership. Larry has a great personality and a very strong work ethic. Outside of school, he helps out at the Clarksville Ruorton Club Thrift Shop, and he does a lot of their heavy lifting and moving furniture and stuff around, so I know that the Ruortons really appreciate that. He does this as part of the football team's giving back to their community. Aside from working and playing sports and studying, he likes to do landscaping projects and he likes to play video games. He plans to attend college after he graduates from Bluestone High School, and he would like to play baseball at the college level and become an athletic trainer. And Bluestone is very proud to have him as their Senior of the Month. At this time, I'd like to recognize Parkview High School's Senior of the Month, James White. Parkview High School is very proud to announce that James Calvin White, Jr. is the September Senior of the Month. He is here tonight with his aunt and uncle, Dennis and Penny Spence, and he also has the loving support of his sister, Crystal Jones. James pushes himself to work hard as he is enrolled in dual enrollment classes at Parkview High School. He's in the Beta Club, he's in the FBLA, he's on the forensic team, he's a Student Government Association, he's part of the yearbook, and he also is very instrumental in their Men of Valor program. James came before this schoolboy last year because he was recognized as a good Samaritan. I hope you will remember his good deed from last year. He was also recognized last year, excuse me, as just a regular student of the month for Parkview High School at the South Hill Chamber of Commerce. In the community, James is very active at the Impact Church of God Youth Group and Southside Rescue. He spends his afternoons in the summers working with their Little Lamb Daycare and working with younger children. He has been a very positive impact on a lot of individuals in our community. In his free time, James enjoys art, the ministry, photography, and playing the piano. He's received many awards and recognitions. He was the Super Camper Runner-Up at the Virginia Church of God Gold Summer Camp in 2016. He was the Virginia Teen Talent 2017 Solo Mime Winner and Second Place Forensic Peninsula League in 2018. He does want to graduate from Parkview High School and attend Lee University. He would like to go into the ministry and pursue nursing.
Ms. Height will also present a special award for American Chemical Society.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Nichols. Tonight I have the privilege of recognizing a fifth grade teacher at South Hill Elementary School, and I'd ask her to come forward, it's Betty Edwards. Ms. Edwards is here tonight because she is being recognized, she was recognized this past weekend, by the American Chemical Society as a distinguished elementary school science teacher. She was treated to a beautiful plaque, and she was awarded a cash amount, and her school also received a cash prize as well. So we wanted to recognize her tonight as being a distinguished elementary school science teacher.
Ms. Edwards, if you will hold on, we always like to have the students and those who are being recognized all come up together. The Board always likes to have a chance to recognize you with shaking your hand and congratulations. So if the students would come back up and meet with her or join her. Okay, we do have quite a few items tonight to review. First of all, there is, on the action items, one overnight field trip that we feel the need for you to go ahead and approve because it's going to have an impact on them being able to collect the funding and go on the trip very quickly. But there are two items that are on your agenda that ultimately, the second one will also come up in another month for you to vote on. If you have any questions about that, I know that they're both from Bluestone Middle School, and I'm sure that Dr. Lax will be available if you have any questions. Seeing none, we do have some policy update information from Mr. Jeffers, and I'll ask him to come up.
Good evening, once again, I didn't bring them back, but three, these are the three items that we discussed at the past previous board meeting, and tonight would be the night for action, so be happy to take any questions if we do have them on them. It's the regulation about the drug, or the tobacco that we've required to adopt. So just a couple of items, if any questions.
Third item on the agenda is discussion that we have been having for several weeks now related to the dual enrollment classes and opportunities for students at Bluestone High School and Parkview High School. This has been a subject that we have been looking, particularly with parental concerns that have been expressed for the past two weeks or more than that. The issue basically has come to reality because we have had a lack of being able, we have not been able to find some English teachers with the appropriate master's degrees to satisfy the community colleges' requirement for teaching the community college classes. We have teachers at the Bluestone High School that have the social studies. We have engaged the community college itself to support the math class that is there, the precalculus class, to be able to afford those students the opportunity. And we've gone back and worked with persons both at the Governor's School and just in general with the counselors to make sure that we have a schedule to be able to make the options available so that this year's seniors, and we've even planned for options for the juniors and sophomores to be able to go through and complete the requirements. But I pointed out, and to you as well as to members earlier, of the community and to parents and others, several years ago, we recognized that the number of teachers that we had was, we have a shortage of teachers altogether, and the requirement for the master's degrees is one that is very difficult to find on top of having teachers with the appropriate certifications to teach. And so we said we would not be in a position to guarantee that they would be able to complete the associate's degree in the process. And therefore, we were looking, as the state does expect school divisions to be able to offer advanced classes, that we would be looking to bring in the advanced placement classes in order to cover that need and, of course, our goal is to make sure that students are well-prepared for the rigor of the university. The parents have expressed concern that even with that statement, there have been teachers available at Parkview who are certified to be able to teach the dual enrollment classes, and that they felt it unequal, that students at Bluestone did not have that option. So we've been looking at some options, we're still considering options that would make it available in the spring. We're pursuing the requirements that the community college would have, and our goal is to be able to, starting in the spring, be able to fulfill those expectations for the students by use of technologies, teachers that we can work with to fill those options and work with them in that way. Along the way, there have been some concerns about other issues at Bluestone High School that they feel are unequal, and I think we'll be having some comments tonight about some of those inequalities. Some of the components that I would just like to bring to everyone's attention is that, you know, that yes, there are some classes like the JROTC and the auto mechanics at Parkview that are not at Bluestone, we're having to transfer some students both ways. But we also have the TEALS program and other technology programs at Bluestone that we're having to move students in the other direction. A lot of the issue related to the inequalities are based on student numbers. And I've got some data here from Parkview and Bluestone looking at the academic classes, which of course are the ones that are required for the associate degree opportunity. We have 182 classes that are academic in nature at Parkview. We have 113 classes that are academic in nature at Bluestone. There are 31 teachers teaching the 182 classes at Parkview, there are 19 teaching the Bluestone academic classes. The average class size on both cases is 18 to 1. And then the teacher-to-student ratio in both cases is one teacher for every 19 students. So, you know, we are addressing as many of the inequalities as we possibly can, we will continue to work towards that goal. It's one that I have met with parents on two occasions, and we will continue. I don't know that there's going to be any way that we can have equality and total equality in the classes until we consolidate, but of course, that's one of the reasons that we were looking to move forward with the consolidation of the middle schools and the high schools, is so we could offer the best career options available to them. I would like to reinforce again that the colleges that I have talked with, and I have talked with many universities about this process through the years, from the beginning of the dual enrollment opportunity in our local southern Virginia school divisions with the Southside Virginia Community College. And the colleges have always stressed the importance of the rigor of the classes, and that's what we continue to want to make sure of, is that the students have the appropriate rigor to be successful when they move on. So that's been a concern, I'm sure we will be hearing more from some of the parents about that tonight, and we welcome their ideas and welcome their concerns as they bring them to the Board, but I did want to put that out there as a consideration. And if you have questions in this part of the meeting tonight, then I'd like to address them.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Ms. Honeycutt?
So I just wanted to make sure I was following you correctly in your statement. So what would be, what is going to be your recommendation moving forward for next semester for the equality issue with the dual enrollment?
Our goal is to make sure that the students at Bluestone have the same opportunities for dual enrollment classes as the students at Parkview. That's what we've been asked to do, that's what we're going to try to do. There are several ways that we can attempt to do that. The goal, the primary goal and the request of the parents has been to find a teacher that would be able to work with the students at Bluestone, just as they do one-on-one with them. In the past, we have used two-way videos when we've had connections between the student and we've looked at that. For this semester, there's a problem with the scheduling of the classes right now. The community college has given us the option of being able to go back in and actually video the classes and make the video available. But as I can understand, the parents have expressed concern about either of those options. So we will be looking to see what options we have for a teacher to be in the classroom.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. I think it's important in all this, not to let the college off the hook for some of this confusion, in that we need to encourage the college to do their part in identifying courses for possible dual enrollment, helping us find suitable instructors. We've had, of course, I work at the college, we've had turnover there, we have some new places, people in certain places, but they've, the new president has put somebody new in charge of dual enrollment, so I'm really hoping, from what I know of her, she's going to get things, she'll light a fire under people, because I'm afraid that the college, it seems to me that the college has dropped the ball a little bit, too. It's not all our job here in Mecklenburg County. The college needs, they have personnel for dual enrollment that get paid to do that. They need to get in the schools and see, and look at the schedules and see what the dual enrollment classes are and anticipate these problems before they happen. So I just don't want us to leave the college off the hook in all this, because they share in some of the blame for this, because it shouldn't fall through the cracks at the college either. They should have seen this coming, and there's things that they could, they should have been addressing this, they should have been contacting us, saying, "What can we do so this doesn't happen?" And they haven't been, apparently.
Well, one of the issues that's come up is the reality of some teachers, we had one, other school divisions in the area have had teachers that were given the opportunity or told that they would be allowed to teach the dual enrollment classes because they had a master's degree, and then as later times came up and accreditation issues for colleges were more stringent, they actually said, "I'm sorry, but these persons who once one time were allowed are no longer allowed to teach." And that hit us in some of our science classes, for an example, and it hit others in math classes. I have had significant numbers of conversations with the community college about that. And we have four individuals in the English department at Parkview that have master's degree. Only two of them were, it was our understanding, had been certified in order to be able to teach a dual enrollment. I have since gone back and resubmitted, and I know that we have other options now with those teachers to be able to make them available. So I think they are looking to work with us more on that. Enrollment is down. We'll continue to press the issue for several others and see what we can do to be able to support teachers in being able to get that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is it, well, putting a little of the burden on the community college, they teach these classes, right? Why can't they Skype or teleconference these classes and let our students take them and catch up this year? Because they were cheated out of everything last year, so they got nothing last year, which put most of these students that are, that want to do the dual enrollment a complete year behind because they lost their junior year. Now we're going to put them in the first semester, and they're going to lose the whole first semester. I mean, between the high school and the community college, why can't we put our heads together and get something done now rather than wait until next spring to start it? Because that's six months of lost time again. So now these kids have a year and a half of lost time. I mean, if the community, even if we have to pay something for it, you know, let's do something to right the wrong that's been done. I'm just asking if it's a possibility. I know you, I know, you know?
I agree with you, they should bring forward solutions to this problem.
Right.
It shouldn't all fall, it shouldn't all fall on us, because the community college benefits from this relationship as well.
Oh, yeah.
So they need to be a participant in the solutions to this problem. So we should give them the problem and say, "What can we do? Give me some solutions to this."
Well, we do have, for example, the precalculus class at Bluestone. We have a person at the community college that is basically the deliverer of the material. We have a teacher there, and that's working out for that. Of course, that's a small number of students. And we have done that before on both ends, Parkview and Bluestone, had someone from the community college that was being available to cover for the need that is there, and we will look to them again. I do just want to bring it to, to remind Board members that the agreement that we have with the community college right now is basically not costing us anything for these classes because we provide the space and we're providing the teachers. When it comes down to the community college providing some of those components, then we do have a financial obligation to pay to them for those services. But of course, it's worth it to look and see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, they're happy on one end of the county, but the other end of the county, they're not doing anything for us. I mean, the Bluestone end gets nothing from the community college at this point, almost nothing. They are obligated, if we have an agreement, they should be obligated to try to help us with some instruction of some type, even if we have to pay for it out of our budget or go ask for more money from the Board of Supervisors or something to make equal education a reality in this county. And that's, I'd like to follow up, that's all I got to say.
One other comment, Mr. Chairman. You know, I totally agree. You know, I have seen this coming. You know, again, it's not only English, it's other subjects as well with the teacher shortage, but we have the technology to make this happen. You know, I know it might not be realistic for, you know, to be able to have it Skyped in or, you know, whatever two-way we want to use, we've got the teachers, we just don't have an all-in-one building. But we do have a solution, and I agree with Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Edwards also, we need to go back to them and say, "Look, you've got a stake in this as well, you know, you need to ante up." And again, I agree with Mr. Edwards, we don't need to make these students wait, if it's something we can do to build in for now instead of waiting, you know, next semester. I think we need to do everything possible to ensure our children in Mecklenburg County are treated equally.
My question is, has there been a meeting with the community college to let them know the limit that we're in now? Yes. Yes, sir, I've met with them on numerous occasions. Did they come up with any? They've worked with us, I mean, as was mentioned, last year's English 11 class, which is the 111, 112, because we were making available the advanced placement, meeting the expectations of the Department of Education and others for advanced academics, and because we had mentioned to parents, and it was in the handbook, that we would make the dual enrollment classes available where we could, but that we would not be able to offer the option at all times for the associate degree, but continue to give credit where we had the option. And they came back and said that is, they knew that they were taking the advanced placement class, and they would work with us on allowing those students to go back and get the 111, 112, though they're taking the 200 level class now. That's a memorandum of agreement that they've worked with us on, so that we'll be able to work out that piece of it. They've also talked with us about other options, there's a humanities class that is required. We have covered at Bluestone with the use of the two-way video for the math support, which we did last year and we're doing again this year. We've covered everything but what the English, the lack of English teachers with the certification could cover. There's a humanities class that's a part of that as well. And they've given us an understanding of other, of subject areas, in art, in religion, in philosophy, in music, that classes that could be taken that would count for that humanities option. And that's been included in the preparation for students as we put together, I should say, the Counseling Department has worked very hard to put it together, plan so that seniors and juniors would be in a position to go ahead and complete the associate degree option. And they've worked with us on how we could fill those classes with other than English. Mr.? What we need to do, and I agree with these gentlemen who have already spoken, we need to get on it, and that's something that we just, we need to do as a group and not let these kids fall behind.
Right. Ms. Garner?
I think with the schedule you gave the parents last week, it addressed some of the questions and hopefully fills in some of the gaps. One of their major complaints, they want a, an English teacher transferred from Parkview back to Bluestone that has a master's degree. They feel like, why should there be four teachers at one school and none at the other? And another thing, they are still upset that there are still opportunities offered at Parkview that are not offered at Bluestone. And I'm hoping that we can get through this this year. And the English teachers, they want now, they don't want second semester, they want that teacher now. They don't want second semester, they want that teacher now. Because they need an English teacher there with a master's degree. And they don't care who it is.
Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Ritchie, do you know if we're past the ad drop period at Southside Virginia Community College?
We're probably past for the 16 weeks, but we have all kinds of miniature semesters inside the May, like 12-week, 10-week, second eight-week. There's all kinds of terms within the term where these students could be enrolled.
My second question is, there was a statement made that the community college would no longer grant dual enrollment credit to ninth and 10th grades. Do you know if that's true?
I don't believe that's true. I believe the policy for the community college system is that has to be approved on a case by the president. It has to be, the president has to sign off on that at each community college.
Because without credit being conferred in those two grade levels, it would be virtually impossible to get a dual enrollment.
Yeah, well, that's why they've done that to begin with. They get the, a couple of classes, I guess, in the ninth grade, but that has to be approved on a case-by-case basis, so, because I think that...
I think the intention when the statement was made was, as we put, as the community college years ago put together the plan for students being able to complete the associates as they were completing their high school degree and earned that before they earned their high school degree, they needed to have something, and so it made a much more general statement. As they've looked at that statewide, they've come back and said, "There can be options when the president approves individually, but not generally for just carte blanche, you can just do it whenever." Because again, they're looking at the rigor of the classes and what it takes. One of the other things that we have done is, earlier I asked you to approve allowing me to work with students who want to go to the community college, take classes on their own, and then we give them high school credit for it. That's dual enrollment as well. And we have opened up the door for students to be able to do that.
The reason I ask that question, because as a division, you know, we would have to come up with some type of agreement with the president of the college to be able to offer that complete degree program. It's what it sounds like to me. If they're only going to do it now on a case-by-case basis, and that, that is why the VPT was not given at the middle school level last year, it was because we were working on that premise. And so, and so now we have to go to the community college to take the VPT to even get ready to take a dual enrollment class. So I think there's some work, maybe there's some discussion that needs to take place between our division and Southside if we're going to continue this, this relationship. Otherwise, maybe we need to talk with Dambler Community College or another community college system that would be willing to work with it.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, have you, Mr. Nichols, or anybody from the administration, any guidance people, had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Michelle Edmonds, who is the new director of dual enrollment for Southside?
I've only met with Dr. Dalton and Dr. Patton. I have not, I was not aware that they'd made a change in the person who was doing it.
Yes, Dr. Michelle Edmonds is the new director.
She's back. They moved, they removed, we've changed presidents, they removed the vice president that was there, and they added those duties to the other vice president, and they moved Dr. Edmonds up and put dual enrollment under her.
Yeah.
And from what I know, Dr. Edmonds, she will get this straight.
And she is very eager to work with Mecklenburg County Public Schools in getting that associate program back.
Because what Wanda says is another example, that they didn't offer the VPT that they had always done, and they didn't even tell you they weren't going to do it. Some parents knew about it, and they had to carry their kids up there and take it. Why didn't the college contact us? You know, why is it always the high school that's responsible for scheduling that? Why didn't the college say, "We need to schedule a date for the VPT"? We wouldn't have told them no. You know, so, but I think they've identified that there's maybe an issue. Dr. Ed, but Dr. Edmonds in there, I really have a lot of faith in her to help, to work with us and help get a lot of this stuff straight.
Ms. Edwards, do you have anything?
Yeah, I guess I'm saying, we just need to do it now. I mean, if this board needs to have an extra meetings to meet with, with the community college, we need to get it done now. And the longer we drag it, the worse it gets, you know? It's not helping anybody. Either we're going to do it, or we're going to do away with dual enrollment and AD and everything, go back to honors classes and forget, because evidently we can't control what we're doing, because it's, it's like a balloon somebody blew up and didn't tie a knot, and it's just flying around, it's going to run out of air soon. So we just need to go.
Mr. Nichols, you spoke on DE versus rigor and AP.
Yes.
What I've been hearing from the community is a lot of families do enjoy the opportunity for their kids to graduate with an associate's degree. And I'm also hearing that both schools want that opportunity for the children. As Ms. Garner pointed out, the difference from English teachers at one school that can teach DE versus the other. I know some people believe that AP is the best option. However, if the student doesn't pass the AP test with a certain score, at the end they get nothing as far as college credit. If they pass at whatever grade they're doing enrollment class, they get college credit. So this board also has to make a decision and direct the superintendent, if it's the pleasure of this board, what is the direction that we want this county to go? The people are talking, we're hearing the people saying they want DE. It is our responsibility to give that direction by vote, whether or not we're going to continue with DE and support it financially, or are we going to go in a direction of AP? That is the question that this board will have to decide on. I know Mr. Nichols has talked about AP and DE, and Parkview has both, Bluestone has a little like on some of the DE. So one way of doing this is the board, by vote, can make that decision and direct the superintendent as to which way we want this county to move in. And with that vote, there's going to be other responsibilities, financial costs and everything else. But if the board is not willing to accept that cost, then we need to look at AP across the board. Because right now, we still have students getting DE courses, possibly graduating or graduating with an associate's degree, and some kids don't have that benefit. And that is the problem. So we as a board can take the responsibility as ourselves and say, "What are we going to do? Are we going to direct the superintendent to continue the DE and we try to figure out what the cost is going to be? Or are we going to go in a direction of AP? That's something we as a board have to take responsibility for. And we can't keep kicking the can down the road or looking at Mr. Nichols and asking him. We can give direction. So that's something that we have to discuss as well pretty quick. Mr. Nichols, they say it's springtime. That means we're going to miss winter. This board has the authority to make the vote and give direction, if it's the pleasure of the board. And we can talk about that during the board member comments, what your stance on it will be. Mr. Nichols, you will have to provide this board with the cost. The other suggestion is shifting personnel, so that we can have personnel at both ends. There are many things we can talk about, we have to be of action at this point. We can't keep talking about springtime. I think the parents want something done now, and this board has the authority to do it. And that's our responsibility. Any questions based on that? And we're going to have comments, we can still comment on it later. Mr. Ritchie?
Should we schedule a special meeting before our next regular meeting and invite people, some of the people from the college, and just get it done? Have a work session meeting and just go ahead and, because like you said, it keeps getting kicked down the road.
Yes.
And I feel like we could schedule a special meeting, get some people here from the community college, and let's just get this taken care of.
Get the facts, get the numbers, know what the cost will be.
Right.
And make a decision.
And I think it should be done in the next week.
Week, yeah.
Because every week that we wait is another week of kids without what they need, and just, it's more of a burden on the children. They will never catch up if we continue to talk it down the road.
So is it, is it the pleasure of the board that we get together and do a special meeting within a week and get the assistance of Southside Community College to come in, give us cost, and make whatever personnel transfers or whatever we need to do to have a solution? Springtime is not acceptable. That's what I'm reading from the board.
No, it's not.
So we have to, as a board, have a meeting and make a decision within a week. We also need finance to come and let us know how we're looking on the budget, but we need real members so we can make a decision and not just talk about it anymore. Okay? All right. Ms. Nichols, moving on.
All right. You have in your packet material from SCANSCA, the monthly update on the new middle school and high school. Would bring it to the attention of the board that tomorrow at 2:00 is the official opening of the bids at 2:00 from the construction agents that will be bidding on it. That's a milestone in our process, and you are invited to come and participate. It's a, it is a public meeting. I would, I would make sure that you understand that the information that comes in tomorrow is a bid, but it still has to be verified as meeting the expectations of the, of the contracts. And so it will not be a decision made tomorrow, it simply will be receiving those bids and then being opened. We will, I anticipate that the bids will be coming in higher than what we had budgeted for that with the board of supervisors. I anticipate that based on what bids are coming in in other school divisions that are building them. If it does come in higher, then of course we will have to have a meeting as to whether we, you know, what we want to do with the higher bid, and probably take that to the board of supervisors for them to comment and work with us on that as well. I have asked for a joint education committee, and we have not had a date set. We've had another discussion about a joint education meeting. It is time for us definitely to have a joint education meeting, one way or the other, but this is a very significant time tomorrow for our board. And I open to any questions or comments on that.
Any questions?
None.
The fishing club, actually, we have two, but as this board is aware, one of them has been directly connected to our school system. We were paying for the coach for that team, and in fact, this board had voted to start the process. And so we've looked into the whole process. Both teams were successful last year. There have been some questions in the community about how the funds need to be covered for the one that is associated with us. The other club has become its own 501(c)(3) with recognition as an individual club. The club that has been associated with us through the team, the coach, has indicated that they are anxious because of the way it's been, these clubs are handled throughout the state, to move out on their own. And it is a recommendation from our lawyers and from the experience that we've had in watching this as it's grown through the year, that that would be the best idea for us to, to take the club that is connected with us currently away from being connected with us and have them go out on their own as a second club in the community for us. So that is a recommendation that I have made. It's been put on the agenda. We don't usually like to have an agenda item that we bring it up at the same time, but it has been recommended by some board members that we go ahead and vote on that tonight. So if you have any questions, I have taken this to the finance committee and let them, given them even more detail about some of that. If there are questions, I'll be happy to answer questions you have before we have the vote tonight.
I have one.
Yes.
Or a couple. That's at the request of the school-related club as well. Their request is that they're going to become independent?
Yes, they are desiring to become independent.
Okay. For those of you who don't know the background on that, this county has never had a fishing team, never. The board moved forward to vote on a school team, and from that vote, it sparked such great interest that another community team was formed. So at this point, we have kids from Parkview High School, Parkview Middle, I believe, Bluestone High, and Bluestone Middle that have the opportunity to be on a fishing team and to go state and national competition. So it's fitting that we live in the largest lake in Virginia, that is large enough to host two fishing teams. So I'm looking forward to the many students engaging in that opportunity they've never had before. Thanks, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. Also, on the items tonight that's on your agenda, there is a request for the board to vote on a VSPA regional chair, and I'm going to ask Mr. Honeycutt if he has some comments on that to bring it to, for you to have full understanding of that request.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Yes, I have actually served the last two years in the southern region as the regional vice chair. Dr. James Coleman, who has been the chairperson the last two years, and I've worked closely together on setting up spring meetings and forums and so forth, and I just enjoy the participation in the VSPA and being able to go and see many different facets and see other counties and other divisions in the Commonwealth that are doing things, promoting things that I can help or come back and bring back to the county that we can implement here. So I am asking tonight for the board's support, because I do have to get a vote on this. I would appreciate your support in moving forward. I am going to enter my name for regional chairperson for the Southern Virginia for 2020 and 20, 2020, 2022.
All right. That is an action item, and I expect that the board will fully support Mr. Honeycutt on his venture of doing that. We'll be voting on that tonight as well. Mr. Nichols?
Yes, I do have some individual comments beyond the items that are actually on the agenda about the opening of the school year and things how things have been going. You know, we've taken, we've had a very good opening so far this year. There have been some undercurrents of some questions and concerns that have been raised through the year. One of the items that has been brought up is the cleanliness of the schools as an item that has been very positive. We have, we have, I think, a lot of appreciation to be extended to Mr. Dalton and his crew, because overall, we continue to hear that the schools this year are cleaner, bathrooms are cleaner, and we're very, very thankful for that. So I wanted to bring that up as an item. Our student numbers this year, we were just getting information about numbers. Of course, this led to some questions about an issue at La Crosse Elementary School. I'd like to give that to you. The state had caused us to be concerned because the trend for our county overall has been decreasing from year to year. Over the past 10 years, we've stated before that we've lost over 10% of our student body. This year, they suggested that we would be decreasing again, but as currently, and this is the numbers that I'd like to be able to point out, currently, our numbers are one more than they were at this time last year. This time last year, we had 4,016. As of Friday of this last week, we had 4,017. That's one more, which is better than the decrease that we had come to expect. However, the only schools that are actually seeing an increase in numbers are Chase City Elementary School, South Hill Elementary School, and La Crosse Elementary School. And the, the one that is causing us to go beyond what we had expected from last year is the increase in numbers at La Crosse Elementary School. We had 365 at this time last year, 395 as of this time this year. And so we had some concerns, because that number actually caused us for kindergarten through third grade to be over what was allowed by Title I expectations. And we had to come back and take a significant look at that situation. We looked at the possibility of being able to work with the students that were out of county, out of zone, and look at moving them to South Hill Elementary where there would be room. What we realized as we had conversations with parents about that is the growth factor that's in that area of the county could very possibly, even if we move those students, put us over the allowable expectations by Title I before we would be at the end of the school year, and therefore, a temporary fix might not last us through the year. And so I came back and then got in touch with the board members and changed my recommendation from that so that we would add a teacher which would take care of us through the year. We may still need to look at another year at some expectations for space and for the size, the student-to-teacher ratio, but we are moving forward with that addition of a teacher to take care of the expectation so we don't lose any Title I funds at this time. And I will open that up if there are members of the board who have questions about that as well.
Questions, board?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Garner?
So we're going to hire a teacher for La Crosse Elementary and say, "You may have the job for only one year."
There's, with the numbers that we have currently, we don't have, we have reason to believe... to believe that who we hire this year will be needed for other years.
That is if we accept out-of-county, out-of-zone students?
No, the, the numbers that we have are not just students that are out-of-county and out-of-zone. The out-of-county and out-of-zone option only put us over the numbers that we were, we were allowed to have by the Title I expectations. But we have, we have more than double the numbers of students that have come in as opposed to just the numbers that we have in the out-of-county, out-of-zone. The issue with the out-of-county, out-of-zone just put us in a situation where the student-to-teacher ratio required cut us back or put us over and now with the teacher we're able to cut back. But that will, having the teacher will actually, they won't just take care of those students. That teacher will be able to cover us and reduce the numbers. And, and just as an example, in, in Chase City Elementary School right now, I've got a couple of second grade classrooms, just as an example, with 12 students. But at, at La Crosse Elementary School, we're looking, and before we were going to be hiring this teacher, at a twenty, twenty-four students and we needed to have no more than 22.
Any other questions?
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Edwards?
Is, we have the money in the budget to handle this?
Right now, we have the money in the budget to be able to work with it. We have, when, in looking at the overall issues that we had from raising salaries and fixing the scale, we have some concerns about the actual numbers that we had projected for salaries this year as compared to what we have, but we feel like we have the money in the budget to be able to take care of it.
So we'll be able to hire those five D E teachers at Bluestone, we'll probably find that too.
We'll be looking to see what we can do with that as well.
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Bailey?
I'd like to congratulate all our schools so far in this academic year for attendance. We had a couple of issues last year and it looks like all of our schools are in the 90th percentile for attendance this year and if they're not in school, they can't learn, so thank you all for sending your kids to school.
All right, Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, are you saying that minus the out-of-county, out-of-zone students, La Crosse is still over?
No. What I'm saying is-
I thought you said that.
I'm sorry. I, I, I don't believe I did, but I didn't make myself clear.
I think you said if even not counting those students, we would still need another teacher, possibly.
If, the, the direction that we're going at La Crosse with increased numbers of students coming in-
Based on the years?
Based on what this year's numbers have shown. And as I talked with those parents and I specifically asked the question, why are we seeing increases in numbers at La Crosse that we're not seeing in other areas? And the answer that I was given, and I have no way of verifying this is true or not, but the answer I was given is because rents are cheaper in the La Crosse district than they are anywhere else in the county. That it has, the influx of the Microsoft workers and employees that has had an impact on rent in Clarksville, Chase City and South Hill has not yet reached La Crosse. And that's why we're seeing, as people are coming into the county, they said, and I don't know what I would need to do to verify that, they said we will continue to probably see more growth. We are seeing growth overall on the east end and we have through the years as opposed to the west end. If they're concentrated there, then what I was looking at was the reality that the initial, the numbers for the student-to-teacher ratio that we saw go over the expectation, we could have handled that by moving the students who were in the out-of-zone or out-of-district. And that would have pulled us back down just to meet that number, but we're still seeing increases in numbers. It's not just the out-of-county and out-of-zone that's making up for this additional 30 students. And if the trend had gone, we could have, we could have moved beyond that number again because it was a number of like six to eight at the kindergarten, elementary level that we're, we were looking at working with.
Yes, so I'm clear. What is the capacity of La Crosse and how many students are we over?
For kindergarten through third grade, we were over by, I believe it was eight students and Ms. Puckett is not here. Ms., Ms. Height, do you remember the exact number?
The number that was suggested to be was four.
Yes. Because it would be difficult to move kindergarten through third graders if they didn't move older students as well. And it would be, also be difficult for us to say, you're an out-of-county, out-of-zone student that we would need to move, but you're not. So we were going to look at all of them or it would be hard to move.
This has caused a lot of concern in that part of the community. I've received a couple of calls, like other Board members have. In particular, I've received two calls from kindergarten parents. They told me that they were told that kindergarten is not over capacity. It is the, what, second, possibly third grade.
First and second grade that was specifically over, yes.
And these two kindergarten parents said, if the kindergarten capacity is not over, why do they have to move? Why not use a more surgical approach than pulling everyone in that has caused the teacher ratio to go over? So I know there's a growing trend in La Crosse, but what is the number of kids in that second grade that has pushed us over the teacher ratio count?
I believe it's six.
Six?
Yes.
And after we had those six students identified, instead of, the initial suggestion was to move those six students to South Hill Elementary.
And it was others at first grade as well. First and second were the two that were directly impacted by the numbers that we currently have now.
So the number was around six?
Eight, six to-
Eight.
Eight to 10.
But then the kindergarten group was pulled into it.
Right.
Even though kindergarten was not over capacity, they were pulled into it.
And they were close.
Okay. So the teacher that we're going to hire is going to service eight children?
No, the teacher we hire-
It's going to, it's going to service more, but-
But particularly work with us to be able to take care of those in the first and second grade, yes.
Okay. And it's possible that the population in La Crosse is going to increase by the end of the school year by more than eight, 10 kids?
Yes. I mean, being realistic, it's possible.
It's possible, okay.
So what we might have to do, you know, of course if a student moves into our area, we have to take them, but we could cut off any new enrollments from out-of-district, couldn't we, at La Crosse?
Yes.
Say whoever's in there is fine, but from, you know, we're not going to accept any new ones until we get a hold of that.
In fact, we have done that.
All right. Because that's something we can't control, is how many out-of-county ones or how the state ones even come in.
Right.
So, Mr., Mr. Mr. Honeycutt and Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, you know, and moving forward, because again, we had a little of this last year as well, but I don't know what the, I'm familiar a little bit with the process of how we distinguish or how we determine who is out-of-district or out-of-zone, you know. I don't know how closely we, we really look at that, but moving forward, you know, if we could use another method in showing proof of residency, because a lot of those parents are telling me that they use an Ain Betty's address, Ain Sue, and they're not really in that district or they're really not in that zone, you know, it's, it's not fair to the kids who actually are in that district or who live in that zone that are, you know, do go or should go to La Crosse Elementary School. I just, I wish it was a more broader approach of how we, how we come to that conclusion where it's not a lot of, you know, they can wiggle in the cracks. And, you know, if we could come up a think of a way moving forward to make that happen, I think that would ease the process a little bit as well.
Well, it's an annual update that we work with the parents on, that they apply each year. And we do, when we're, when we're told, and I have had one or two persons that have specifically been pointed out, that they are in fact claiming to have a residence in one spot but living outside of that spot, then we look to go and find them because we don't want to have that happen. But when the students enroll, they are asked to provide appropriate information to show what, where they live and it's checked to be sure. So we will continue to monitor it. It's, it's not a matter of the school personnel being lax in what's done, it's a matter of being able to show documentation without necessarily going and following them home to see where they live.
All right, Ms. Edwards?
So it's a possibility we'll have to take that classroom back from Head Start next year, right?
Uh, we've already let Head Start know that we're taking the classroom back, yes.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Garner?
Yes. I think we should strongly consider all of the county to rezone the students in this county so that we can equal out the schools. Parkview is overcrowded, Bluestone has plenty of room. And I think if we sit down and rezone and move kids from Parkview to Bluestone until we can get into the new school, I think that will help the whole situation. And I think even with the elementary schools, making sure that they are rezoned where schools will accommodate the students that they're supposed to be. But I think that's the best way to do, starting before the end of the school year, get ready for next year, get these kids rezoned to go to wherever they're zoned for, whether they like it or not.
Ms., Ms. Garner, I think it is a, it is a option, but as soon as you said that, I can see the horror. The look on the face of many people. So the, the question is whether or not the Board, as always, is willing to take that on. Ms. Garner, because you brought it up, we can put that up for discussion at our next Board meeting. And as always, comes down to the pleasure of the Board. The Board wants to entertain rezoning, shifting some of the overcrowding from Parkview Middle to Parkview High, to push that to Bluestone Middle and Bluestone High. That'll be a Board vote. And, you know, the good part about it, it is a public conversation and the Board members will have plenty of time to hear from their constituents on their opinion. And, Mr. Nichols, we can put that up for information at our next meeting and that will give the Board members plenty of time to hear from their constituents. Ms. Edwards, you have something else? Mr. Palmer, actually.
Mr. Chairman, I may look at this a little bit different than my counterparts here. I take pride in knowing that there are other counties who think that Mecklenburg County is strong enough and look good enough that they want to send their children to our county. I think that's a plus. Now, do we have a problem with overcrowdedness? No joke. I was there for two years at La Crosse Elementary as principal. The problem exists then. We need to just come up with a way of dealing with that wherein that we have large enough or enough teachers or enough teachers, yes, that we can deal with it, but I take pride in knowing that people want to send their children, whether it's coming from, I'll just call a few names, Brundrick, North Carolina, Nottaway, Lunenburg. I like that idea because they like our county and I think that's a plus for us. And everybody who's in here should feel the same.
Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I look at that. I've always thought the same way. And when it comes to elementary schools, you know, I've, I've, I've really thought a lot about this, this situation and I was against it at first and said move the kids, but, but, you know, if you sit here and think about your child in kindergarten, first, second or third grade, having to move, move now or change schools, you know, it's, it's, it's really hurtful to a child at that age to start out in a school and then have to move, unless the parents move out of town or out of state. If they get, they get entrenched in La Crosse Elementary School, they know the teachers, they know the principals, they know everybody and they should grow with that. So it really is hard to do this and just tell the kids, okay, we're going to move you over to South Hill Elementary School. I know, I know that's easy for a grown-up like us to say if you're hard-hearted. It's, it's easier at the middle and high school level than it is elementary school, but it hurts me to move a little kid like that. You know, I know they get over it, but I'm not about getting over it.
I'd like to say something also. Back in 1970, I was going to Chase City Elementary School. That summer, I was notified that I was going to start going to La Crosse. That was a big hurt to me. And when I was confronted with these young children in first, second, third grade having to be moved, I was totally against it. If it was high school kids, they're grown enough to make a handle, but I was going to redistrict them and got to figure out a way to keep these kids where they are. That's how I've been there.
All right, Mr. Nichols, you have anything else in your piece of this meeting?
Yes. We have been looking at the audits for the student accounts in the past and some questions about student accounts and in trying to come up with policy and procedure that would be related to the accounts. I think there was some misunderstanding, this communication and some concerns frankly raised by several of our teachers about the hard work that had been put into raising funding for the students, for awards, for prom, for a number of different issues and monies that maybe had been, or saved through the years to make sure that there was growth in each of those areas. I've had a couple of meetings with schools and teachers in those schools about some of the policy manual, the new policy manual that you all were looking at related to student accounts that has been coming out. And I just want to use this time to assure teachers that we have had conversation that there aren't clubs, there's a difference in the general account and club accounts. And we discussed this as well in the Finance Meeting. Club accounts, information and funding cannot come, cannot be brought back into the general funds of the school divisions, okay? Some of the general information, the general accounts in the schools themselves, when there are expectations of growth from year to year and need for carryover, then we work with them on making sure that that's clear. We have no desire to take any monies that were out in the school divisions and bring it back to Central Office when we turn all of our monies in from one year to the next. So we have had that conversation at the Finance Committee meeting and Ms. Puffer made it and Mr. Jeff first made it very clear, you know, the direction that we're going with that beyond this administration, that'll still be true. And we're making some inroads as far as the, you passed policy, but we will be bringing some updates to the policy for you to look at that will take care of the questions and concerns that have been raised by the teachers. So, other questions or comments on that?
Just to, to clarify all that, they'll be able to carry over-
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, I'm sorry, and just so everybody is transparent, the monies from the clubs, the individual clubs, they're going to be spent on those students that year.
This, well, the monies are spent on the students, but sometimes it goes from junior year to senior year and, and when they raise money, that's their expectation that we will be working with those students to be able to do it. But an example that was given was for the drama. And in the case of the drama, from year to year to year, they raise money they've been building up so that they could purchase others. That could go beyond just that year and, and be able to carry over.
Yes, I understand that, but I'm just saying the monies need to be spent on those students.
Generally, the students that is being raised for, it's got an expectation that they would be spent on that, yes.
Like to show our administrators, show our students that they have equity in as well. I mean, I know we fundraise and do all of that, but-
Exactly.
We need to have a piece of the pie as well.
Exactly.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Nichols?
Um, two items, three items, yes. First of all, I want to let you know that we did have drug tests, the first set of six drug tests this year for our athletics and our club sponsors at the, there will be six of those, two each, each season. In the first set, we had, I believe it was six actual hits that were positive, but they're coming back and we'll be working with them. One of those was for prescription medication that the student was, that was appropriate for that. The others were only on nicotine and not on any drugs heavier than that and we'll be working on them, but we will be continuing to work with the drug tests. Second one that I wanted to point out is that last year, as we're talking about capital improvement opportunities and the need for funding for capital improvement, last year at the Legislature, there was a bill before the General Assembly that gave the locality the right to have a one-cent sales tax for the purpose specifically of school construction projects. That was, that ended up only being for Halifax County. We're going to have construction projects beyond the secondary schools necessary for the elementary schools. And I have had conversation with Delegate Wright to put, to propose the same legislation. I will be bringing language to you at the October meeting and asking for you to support as well as the Board of Supervisors to support that for Delegate Wright as he takes that forward in the General Assembly, because I think it'll be very important for us. And the final thing- And the final thing that I want to bring to your attention is that we've been working on the mascot for the school, and if we can pull that up. The VIP branding, which has been working with our committee, if you'll pass those down, has come up with an initial mascot symbol. And this is it for the phoenix with the colors embalmed and the M for Mecklenburg County. This symbol, of course, is not, it's not a final product. We're still having a conversation with them about it, but I bring this to your attention as a first rendering of what they're suggesting will be unique to Mecklenburg County public schools altogether. We will own it, we will own the license to it, and we will be the ones to, to put that out for other, if anybody else wants to use it and, and profit from it, it will be for us alone. And I want to thank the committees that have been working on this for this first rendering, and I will, of course, bring any finals to you for your consideration as we move forward with this. But I just wanted to bring to your attention, this is what we have so far, and ask any questions that anyone may have.
Mr. Servant, could I have?
Mr. Ritchie.
What about the middle school? What's the mascot for the middle school?
The phoenix has been chosen for the middle and high school together as its one building.
Okay.
Any other comments, Mr. Ritchie? I meant for Mr. Nichols. Mr. Nichols, when can you reach out to South Side Community College to, and see whether or not they can come and bring us some information?
Yes, I'll look for, I'll ask for representation to come at a meeting. I have asked the board supervisors for a joint education meeting for Thursday night. I don't know that we'll be able to get one in before then. I don't, they haven't come back and said that we would have that. So, I would, you know, I'll see how quickly we can get either one of those meetings set up.
With the DE and give us information.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Thursday this week or Thursday?
Thursday this week is what I had, had suggested would be a, a night that we, you know, would be good if we could get it done as quickly as possible after the bid's coming in, but I haven't heard back from them.
Okay, well, as soon as you get the information from South Side, when they can give us the information and attend, we can set a meeting accordingly. All right, Mr. Nichols, if you don't have anything else, let's get into the committee reports. Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee?
No report tonight.
No, that's after the reports. All right. No report?
No report.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee met today at five o'clock. We went over the fishing team, we went over the, some of the things that superintendent has already covered. We did discuss the payment of the bills, and the finance committee will recommend payment of the bills tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. School Safety Committee?
Have nothing, Mike.
Under school safety, I know the plan is the high school, middle school complex, and after that, I believe it's gonna be doing renovations towards the elementary schools, correct?
That is correct, yes.
South Hill Elementary is not gonna be one of those schools for the renovations.
Not necessarily, that's not been a part of the discussion with the board supervisors about appropriating specific monies, but we do know that there's some safety issues that we are looking at taking into consideration that would be in the five-year plan as we move forward. We have a recommendation each year with our budget, the capital improvement, and in that five-year plan, there are updates for things like safety for South Hill Elementary that would go into it.
Is it possible that, I think we have an agreement with the builder of the school, that they can do other stuff for us as well, give us information?
Yes.
One of the issues is the, the entry.
Right.
I think as far as most new schools have buzz entry. South Hill Elementary does not. And I know the new high school, middle school complex will have that, so instead of looking at a five-year, five years down the road, if we can look at that earlier just to kind of know what the cost point will be?
Okay.
And that way, we might be able to move on that early. All right. Gifted Intimate Special Education Committee? Gifted Intimate Special Education Committee?
Well, the only thing I have from Governor's School is that we have an interim director, Dr. Smith, and the superintendents are looking for a new director. Hopefully, they will have one by the end of the school.
It'll be before then. It'll be before then.
I'm talking for the end of the year.
The year, yes.
Okay, CTE, Career and Technical Education Committee?
I don't believe there's one for that.
No report?
None for the athletic committee.
Okay. Instruction Committee?
Not met.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we are public input.
Yes. At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments at board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the school board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak. The clerk of the school board will write down your name, contact information, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed up to six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to begin your comment, please state your name to the board. Lisa Siemens?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Siemens, and I think we've talked a few times about the dual enrollment and the concerns that we have. I've compiled a master list that I received from the superintendent for Parkview and Bluestone classes that, can I present?
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of the information I received, I also looked at Virginia Department of Education. That's where the scores at the bottom came from, to try to reiterate the inequalities between the two schools, specifically the amount of kids that received their associate's degrees. It was sixty-three from Parkview and twenty-eight from Bluestone. As of this, this report, it was 2018, the number of kids at Bluestone was five hundred and twenty-eight, and Parkview was seven hundred and seventy. Also, you'll see on your list that I've also put on there the percentages of teachers that were either inexperienced, out of field, or both. I've also put the scores for both schools at the bottom as reported to the Virginia Department of Education to further show our need at Bluestone. You'll also see there's also the economically disadvantaged percentage there as well, and it's more just to make sure that the board understands the seriousness of the fact that Bluestone has been treated unequal. I've been taking notes, and the TEALS program in the master schedule is not there, so if it's being taught, it's not at Bluestone. So, I don't know if that's something that you need to look into. As far as, what I've also am concerned about is that maybe you all did not realize the classes at Bluestone versus the one that are offered at Parkview. And given you this paper, you can see what the two schools have. My concern is that since you are unaware, do you have any kind of reporting structure that would allow you to see this in its one place? I had to do a lot of work and a lot of hunting to put this together. And, you know, to me, it's black and white, and I can see the schools aren't equal. What I will say, I have a daughter in the eleventh grade who got cheated last year, and I'm gonna call it cheated because if one school has it and the other one didn't, she was cheated. She passed dual enrollment, she took dual enrollment in the ninth grade, she passed and got into Governor's School. Well, here she is in the eleventh grade, and she can't get Spanish III. She gets photojournalism, and I'm not trying to take away or throw off on any subject. But now she's stressed out, she's worried, she's scared, because she's not gonna get the goal that she thought by going the Governor's School route that she would get. Well, then we get this, this paper the other night, and I'm said, it's not possible, how could she possibly do this? I'm worried about my kid, and I'm sure everybody that are here are worried about theirs too. So, who is gonna come to us with the program? I want to see paper that says, your kid has this, your kid needs this, and we're gonna do it this time. Because I'm not gonna put her through all of this. She's, she works hard, and I'm not saying no other child that works any harder or any, not as hard, not trying to say that, I'm speaking for mine. But she's stressed out and worried that all of this is gonna be for nothing. I was told the reason Governor's School was the place to be was because she would interact with the brightest minds. And I said, what is, what is she getting every day? That was your comment. So, I'm not trying to take away from any of the programs that I hope that y'all sincerely want to see these kids succeed in, but I'm glad that y'all are seeing that it needs to happen now, and I hope that this follows through, and, and it does happen now. Because these kids work hard, and they deserve better than what they got. Now, I know Parkview students, they're, that's, I'm not gonna address that because I don't know, but I know the Bluestone kids deserve better than what they have, and I do hope that this, this opens some of your eyes to see that they're all such, they deserve better. And as a school board, y'all took a note to not discriminate against anyone or anything, and I'm gonna include Bluestone in that because you've all been given the care of these schools. And Bluestone used to be a really good school. I, I went there, I graduated from there. And I just think that, I hope you all are very serious about giving these kids what they deserve, and look at the classes that you offer. Maybe there's some that you could take away and give them that have more benefit, but that's all I had to say. Can you tell me, though, is somebody gonna get with these children to let them know their plan, the plan ahead?
Mr. Nichols is taking notes. He should get in contact, or he will get in contact with the guidance.
Yes.
So, we can identify those kids so that conversation can take place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I won't take up much of y'all's time, I'm not a big public speaker anyway. I'm a father of four. I have a, a daughter who's a junior at Bluestone High School, two daughters in middle school and one in Clarksville Elementary. I'd just like to reiterate, you know, some of the things she said. My, my daughter who's a junior is, has worked really, really hard, straight A's, and, you know, from the meeting the other night we had, you know, she comes home potentially, you know, she's upset of the fact that she's gonna have to retake a class that she's already taken to, to get these DE credits, where if she was a Parkview High School student, you know, she's, she's, she's good to go. The, the inequality in the ends of the county is, it's a big deal. And if, if Parkview has the teachers, we needed to look into getting a teacher in a, in a car at noon, and her driving to Bluestone High School and teaching those classes in the afternoons, instead of possibly busing our children to Parkview. You know, that's a suggestion that, you know, I've talked with several people about, my wife included. I think that's, that's a more direct approach, I guess. And listening to y'all tonight, I'm excited of the fact that something's gonna happen now and not next semester, for her sake. And, you know, so, I just wanted to look y'all in the eye tonight and let you know the concerns on this end of the county, and, you know, I hope y'all will, will take them seriously. I'm counting on you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to action. Get motion that school board approves the minutes of the special meeting held August 5th, 2019. Sir, move. Motion for Mr. Honeycutt, move a second.
Sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
abstain.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Get motion that school board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on August 19th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Ritchie, sack for Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Abstain.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain.
Mr. Edwards?
Abstain.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Get motion that school board approves payment of the bills.
Finance Committee recommends we pay the bills.
We have a motion that constitutes a second as well. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Get motion that school board approves personnel recommendations.
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt, sack for Mr. Edwards. Any discussion? None? Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Looking at student discipline, two of those did not show.
Oh-four was a no-show, so you just have oh-five.
Yes. Okay, so we're voting on oh-five. Get motion that school board supports the discipline committee recommendation to place a student in alternative learning for the remainder of the 2019, 2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Edwards, second. We have a discussion, sack for Mr. Honeycutt. It did not include the additional stipulations that we talked about, but the, the overall thing is the audit. Mr. Nichols will inform them of the other particulars.
Okay, thank you.
If no discussions, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Get motion that school board approves the updates to policy GBECR, JFC, JFC dash R, and the division leave request form.
So moved.
We have a motion for Ms. Bailey, it was second.
Second.
Sack for Mr. Honeycutt, any discussion? None? Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Get motion that school board agrees that the fishing clubs are not school-sponsored organizations.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Honeycutt, sack for Ms. Garner, any discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Get motion that school board approves the Bluestone Middle School Spanish overnight field trip to New York, New York, November 29th through the 31st, 2019. We have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Honeycutt, a motion for Mr. Palmer, we have a second.
Second.
Sack for Mr. Ritchie. Any discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous. Good luck, Mr. [inaudible]. All right, the public content, October 24th, whether the school board meet in October 23rd, parent-teacher conference at the elementary school from 4:15 to 6:30. October 24th, parent-teacher conference in middle schools, 4:15 to 6:30 PM. At this time, we're going to board on the remarks. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Sturdivan. I just wanted to set something straight. There was an article in The Sun last week about Bluestone's football season, and I'd like to clarify one point and a quote that was published and attributed to Mr. Nichols. The decision was made after a significant interaction with the school board. I just wanted to set the record straight that the school board did not meet together to discuss this issue. As a matter of fact, I requested a special call meeting to discuss this and another issue, but my request was denied citing the inability to hold a quorum of five members. And so when this board votes, we're required to do that in public, and since we didn't meet, there was no public vote regarding this issue. As far as I'm, as far as I know, there was no significant interaction with the school board as a whole. Now, there may have been interaction with certain individuals on the board regarding this, but that does not constitute board action. Number two, I'd like to thank the Virginia Department of Health for their Southside Dental Program. They're currently providing dental cleanings, dental sealants, and fluoride varnish to our students here in Mecklenburg County in grades pre-K through six. And I just, I want to thank all of our community partners that help us take care of our elementary and middle school students. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Howell for being our Region Eight Teacher of the Year. I wish her much luck in being designated as our State Teacher of the Year. Next Tuesday, September 24th, is also our VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference in Chesterfield, and our mandatory choreo training, it will be available there in person if you'd like to participate in that. And also next Wednesday, September 25th, is National Meet You at the Pole Day. And it's also our Feed More event at South Hill Elementary. We look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Ms. Garner? Comments, if any?
I don't think I have any tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Mr. Ritchie?
I don't have any, thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
I don't have any.
Mr. Palmer?
Nothing.
Mr. Edwards?
That's a good one. I'd like to commend the football coach for doing something. He takes these, some of the football team every Friday night to the Ruettin Club in Clarksville, Virginia. And the reason is, most of the membership of the Ruettins are 60 and above, and they have a lot of furniture to move to get ready for a dance that they have there every, every week, which was headed up by Franklin Dover. He started this about 15 years ago. And just to give you a background on Frank Dover, Frank Dover was a retired principal from North Carolina, a great man, and worked hard, and he was a member of the Ruettins in Clarksville. And the dances and some of the things that the Ruettins do, they're able to put $75,000 in scholarships back into Mecklenburg County schools and to students, and have been on the western end of the county, and I think they're talking about tonight how that's going to be affected when we, when we consolidate the schools. But that money is out there, and that's a lot of money that these people raise. They're all old, they work hard, but, but just to let you know, our, our Bluestone students are given time and effort from the football team to go do that when they're not playing football, so it says a lot about the character of our coaches and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Honeycutt?
Yes, I just want to say a special thanks to the parents who came out this evening to speak up for your children. Not having any children, I do appreciate your efforts, because again, I've said all along for the last four years, this room should be packed every week, which you have, you know, thousands of people here, you know, one family member for each child, you know, but unfortunately, we don't have that. In saying that, I can honestly say, I can go on the record in saying that the last four years, when I say "our" students, when I say "our," I mean all of our students in Mecklenburg County. That's why I'm here, and I appreciate what you all do. I've heard the concern, I've raised the questions over the last few years, why can't we do this, why can't we do that? We have the technology to do these things, why don't we implement them? So, knowing that the rest of the board is in agreement with moving forward and getting something done right now and not waiting, so. Also, I see Mrs. Bobby Wright in the room with us tonight, who is our librarian at Parkview High School, and I don't know if I've had an opportunity to thank her publicly,